I'd like to call the August 8th meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order, and I'd like to welcome all of you, since we've got a pretty good crowd tonight. So, welcome. Do we have any sheets here? These are our public signup sheets, does anybody, everybody had the opportunity? It's not on my agenda if they would like to speak, I'll offer again, so. Any announcements? Lost her lights.
Brian, you're on the line.
Just had in the clips.
Trust him with the guy.
Any announcements? Sorry, Mike's out.
Mike is out tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Shields?
No sir.
No sir.
Well, I've got one, just a quick nod aheads, if it'd be okay with this board, I think it'd be good if we have one of our upcoming meetings, maybe the October, November meeting, in the town of Highlands, for seven years, is that good with everyone? Mr. Managers, and I'll pull that together. Chester?
Scheduling a meeting says they will happen here, if they're a regular meeting. We can certainly recess a meeting from this date to, or from any regular meeting to a Highlands location, or we can call a special meeting at a different location. But short of changing the schedule of meetings, the regular meetings, those are your own.
How did we do that in the past?
I think, I guess what we have done in the past is we have recessed a regular meeting to do a joint meeting, I think is historically what we've done.
As you remember, last year, we had a meeting on Election Day, and we could throw that one, because it was in the front calendar.
What we could do is set this meeting up at a special time, open this meeting, and recess this meeting to our Highlands, that's what we've done.
You could do that, or alternatively, oftentimes, are you thinking about a sure enough regular meeting where we address all the business there? That's going to be the best way to handle that. Otherwise, if you do it by a special meeting notice, and they have some business that come up that you need to attend to, but you've got on the notice, you can't attend to it.
Okay, I'll try and pull that together before next meeting, thank you.
And we've got a lot of folks here from Anaheim sometime, let's consider it Anaheim, it's remote.
Absolutely.
We've got facilities over there, so we won't work on both in conjunction.
Yeah, I agree. We might consider that on our next, next year's meeting schedule.
I was gonna say, if you're interested in doing it on a regular basis, what we could do is, as you get ready to put together your regular meeting schedule, we can make the necessary changes, but we just need to get those dates in ahead of time. Probably about Thanksgiving is about the latest we could, let's just say the November meeting is when we need to be thinking about that, if we're gonna make a change to the schedule.
Good deal, thank you. Well, if all rise, we'll observe a moment of silence, and I'll ask Commissioner Bill to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please join with me in the praise of the flag of our country.
I pray with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to our public comment period. Mr. David Culpepper. Looks like grading license, is that correct?
Yeah.
Welcome, David.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for the opportunity to talk.
So you signed up your run for Holloman?
Um, yeah, we'll, we'll see what, what'll happen. Councilman, yeah, councilman is now, I don't really like talking in public, but I find myself doing it more than, more than I want to. Um, yeah, talk about grading license here, uh, I think an objective observer would actually think that the planning board's recommendations, which I think you're gonna get tonight, um, I think, an outsider would think they're in jest, and that's specifically the $500 a day fine for somebody not having the license. Think about it, I mean, it's not a fine for violating the erosion and sedimentation ordinance, it's a fine for not having a license. What it really does, it's a fine for landowners who don't jump through the bureaucratic red tape in hoops that the grading industry seems like would want you to jump through. If environmental protection is the goal, why not switch the fine to just fine anybody that violates the ordinance? Why is not having a license fine worthy, but violating the ordinance is not fine worthy? It doesn't make much sense. I'd venture to say that the licensing program and the new proposals would have less industry support from the grading industry if you switched the fine from violation to just not, or from not having a license to actual violation of the erosion ordinance. Basically, what you have before you is a huge gift to the industry, squashing competition from small operators, limiting small business growth, but most importantly, the recommendations that they're passing down, specifically the $500 a day fine, tramples all over private property rights. This is how crony capitalism starts, when the state or a governing body starts granting special privileges to an industry, start special licensings and things like that. Of course, the graders, they don't want you to do it themselves, because then you have to hire them. It's a big incentive for me to not go out and do my own grading, because I have to hire them, or else I get fined, not for breaking an ordinance, but for not having the license, for not actually doing the paperwork to have a license. It's a huge gift to the grading industry. At what point do the definitions that are gonna come before you in the licensing program, and the potential fines, when do they apply to landowners? When they're doing a French drain, when they're doing a foundation drain to get water away from their house, when they're doing landscaping, they're breaking dirt then, when they're doing gardening, how big's your garden have to be before it falls into this ordinance and a possible fine of $500 a day? This is an ill-thought-out plan by what I think's an impressionable planning board, and I think it should be flatly rejected by you guys. The license does nothing to promote the actual goal of the erosion control ordinance. If protecting the environment is the goal of the erosion ordinance, then why not put the fine toward anyone not complying with the ordinance? And you can just scrap the licensing program altogether. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Hey, Brian.
Hey, Brian.
Well, it is fantastic to be before you this evening, and before I get started, I just want to say that this is the first time in my voting career that I've ever looked at a board of commissioners and said that I was happy, and I would've voted for all of you had I had the opportunity, but unfortunately, I was only able to vote for Carl. And that being said, a little bit about myself, I'm from Franklin. I was born at Angel Community Hospital in 1974, I've lived here my whole life, I'm raising my kids here, and this is my county, this is a place that I love and hope to always be until the Lord calls me somewhere else. But I do believe each and every person that I'm looking at right now is of moral, high character, that you're morally good people, and that you have our county's best interests at heart. However, I do disagree with him, believe that all of you are very wrong with the way you supported local business the last time you had your meeting. It took less than one minute to vote to take a $181,000 bid to another county. $181,000, and I will say this, I've been, I've seen these bids come and go, and this happened to be one, that I happened to be in the office when this was being bid. All this was done at triple net, and to give you an idea, in dealership world, triple net is absolute dead flat cost. No incentive kickback, no allocation bonus, no incentives at all. Franklin would never have made one plugged nickel. In fact, on the last bid, I was not even allowed to mark up a single spare key with a profit. It all had to be a dead flat cost. And so, you know, I see that, and I see the difference with $300 difference and all that, and I've seen some, maybe a little bit of false reporting, maybe they were just ignorant, didn't understand, but I've seen a little bit of that, saying, well, they have to go with the lowest bid, and I understand with counsel that I've received that that is absolutely false. Maybe you can clear that up for me, maybe that's not the case, but I'd be kinda curious to hear what the reason would be to take money away from our county and take it to another county completely, when quite frankly, that dealership, I haven't seen them sponsor the first high school basketball game, I haven't seen them being in our Little League, I haven't seen their planners or anything like that at Franklin High School. And I'm from here, I mean, granted, everybody knows where I work, but, you know, I'm on the Booster Club, I'm trying my best to work for our county, and it just, it's disheartening, to say the least, when I seen that. And to only take, it was just barely over a minute, just barely over a minute, to even take that money away from us. And I'll tell you with what we've done, we've taken advertising money away from things that we were doing, like with mailers, those ridiculous mailers that you did, and you immediately throw them into garbage, everybody remember that? I know I throw them away constantly. But we took that money away and decided, let's do things in our community that's gonna be more of a positive impact. Through all of that, we've been able to give $28,000 to Franklin High School, just gave another $6,000 to Highlands High School, did another fundraiser, we gave a total of $6,000 to Macon Middle School and Mountain View Intermediate. And I'm sorry, but I've never seen this other dealership in our community. And I don't even know where Park Chevrolet is, I've never even heard of it, and I've been in dealerships my whole life. And I just, I just wish that we would have a little bit more consideration for local businesses, because I think it sends the wrong message, quite frankly, when we're telling everyone to shop local, but yet even our own county chooses not to do so. And, you know, I would just, I would just hope that we would consider that more thoroughly the next time that, that happens to come up, because I will tell you this, we have been approached by other counties to bid this process, and Brian and Hammond Rowers refuses. They refuse it, because they believe that those counties should stay in their county that they're at. But it's honestly no money involved with it, it takes a lot of time, a lot of resources have to be involved with it, it takes hours to do this, because you have to make sure you go through the proper bidding process to do it, to make no money. So it's not like we're looking at a profit center, it's nothing more than pride to make sure our county is in our vehicles. And listen, I'm a capitalist, you know, I believe in capitalism and things that nature. If we had've lost that bid to Jim, to Smoky Mountain Crossler, or Countryside Chevrolet, those people work just as hard as I do, and they've got families, I would have no complaints at all. But quite frankly, we didn't. And, you know, I would just, just like to ask you to please consider that in the future.
Brian, you might just have just a minute to vote on that?
Sure.
You might just seen the vote, but I assure you, there was a lot of discussion before that vote, about at least three of us on this board. I immediately sent out an email asking about the, you know, what was the procedure, because it was so close in money. We want to spend our money locally, we all agree with that. Carl, had a conversation with Carl, and with the chairman, immediately after that. And then we had a conversation with that gentleman over there. And he can explain to you why it took a minute to vote on it, and why we were hamstrung on where we were at. So, but the vote might only took a minute, but I assure you, Brian, there was a lot of discussion before that minute vote, and these gentlemen can speak to that.
Well, we don't see all that, I mean, we don't.
Go ahead, Chester.
Yeah, in a nutshell, I don't have the statute in front of me, but in a nutshell, under General Statute 143-129, the bid must be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. And in this situation, it was, it was a small amount of money, and I will tell you that this board, your county manager, all lamented that the business was going out of county. I will tell you that. But you're required by General Statute 143-129 to take the lowest responsible bid. The bid was lower than your company's.
Okay.
And Brian, I appreciate you coming up and bringing that before this board. There's, there's multiple opportunities that this board has to award projects, and every time that that happens, and it doesn't go in Macon County, it always brings on more talk. And, and I can't speak for everyone else on this board, but I think I'm safe in saying it always will, because, you know, there's, there's local business people sitting here on this board, and we absolutely understand what, where you're coming from, and it, it's, I'm not happy with it, but, but you have to listen to him, you know, and that's.
Been a lot of discussion statewide about whether or not counties can prefer local businesses, and right now, that's not the law, we can't do that. I think there's a lot of sentiment, and a lot of people would like to see that happen, and there actually are some good policy reasons to allow it, at least to some degree, but we're not there yet.
Are all those bids secret until, you know, brought together?
They must be sealed. They must be sealed.
Because, you know, I was looking at the bid, and, you know, granted, I'm in dealership world, so I see all this, probably more so than anyone else, but I can't hardly even understand how a business owner would bid a bid like this, exactly $50 net loss per car. Because that's what it was, I mean, it's great for the county, but we, I looked at this, and each one of those cars were bid at a $50 net loss. I'm just going, what businessperson in their right mind would bid that, to lose $300? And then I looked at it, and I said, well, the county didn't really make anything, because you're having to send six, seven county employees an hour away, and I know those county employees are not making minimum wage, so hasten to say we lost money getting the vehicles over here to our county in the first place, unless they were delivered, which I don't think that's the case, but, so, you know, I appreciate you clearing that up, but I just, I've seen it go on over and over and over and over again, I said, look, instead of being a critic, I just want to at least air my grievance out, and then if nothing can happen, then nothing can happen, and I've had several people in our community, Ted Rhodes is one of them, said, my goodness, I'd've gave the county $300 if it was gonna keep the money in town. And I thought, yeah, had we'd've known, I'd've told Brian, hey, knock $50 off of it, we'll lose money, we just want the county. Yeah, yeah, I can assure you, okay, thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? I saw we had a couple later arrivals. Sure, come on up. You state your name, I'll write it down for you.
I'm Randy Shook from Anaheim.
Welcome, Mr. Shook.
And I would like to oppose this new deal they're coming out with on this re-licensing for solar disturbance. We already have a couple things that pretty much covers anything we do. And why add more regulations than we got two, I think that will take care of any work we're gonna be doing outside, and I definitely think that I have a right to work on my own land without having to come over here and take a test, throw a little gray seed out in the straw. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Randy. We'll move on to additions to the agenda. Mr. Chairman, if you could, I would like to add an item of new business, item number 11F, and that would be discussion of a resolution concerning changes to the potentially dangerous Anything else? Brian, should I?
No.
Chester?
I had prepared a, an amendment to accomplish the amendments to the arrangement between the county and the Colosseum Community Development. Folks, I have given each of you a copy of that, and we'll need to add that somewhere.
This is, this is under Old Business, correct?
Yeah, it's Old Business, it's a matter of just accomplishing by written form what was essentially approved last month.
The background files? I don't see it here.
It's entitled Amendment to Agreement to Provide Recreational Opportunities.
I got you.
Would it use this?
I thought that was the one for Scaly.
No, Scaly's was on the agenda.
I'm with you.
That's gonna be 9C.
Uh, it'd be 10C. Anything else? Chair, on turn, a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve.
Right.
Second, Commissioner Shields, all in favor? Item number nine, 9A, Franklin High School, Future Business Leaders of America, welcome.
Some are older than others.
I know. What about you? This is a part of my crew that went with me to California, and we have Bryson Burt, Bristol Watson, Trevor Rogers, they participate in the community service project, I'm gonna let them tell you about that in a minute. Trevor has his T-shirt that he went with, he's gonna show you in a minute, and then this is Jacob.
Don't mind me, I'm just, just here.
Yeah, he's with us too. So he went with us, and we had about 14 kids that we took out there, June 25th through July the 3rd, and we, I think we walked around, it was almost 60 miles that we walked, at least, that's what my phone said. And so, not only did we go out there and compete, but we went and explored a little bit with Southern California. So I'll let them talk to you a little bit about what we did.
Well, the community service project, most of you are probably very familiar with, that took place in Macon County, it was the colon cancer awareness concert that we hosted at the Smoky Mountain Center for the Performing Arts with Mr. Wade Hayes. Mr. Hayes was a colon cancer survivor, and we did that in efforts to raise awareness for colon cancer throughout Macon County, and to encourage people within our county to be screened. So many people get this disease and don't know about it, and then it's too late to treat the disease. So that was our encouragement with this project. After planning and executing the project, and doing the numerous amount of time that we put into hosting the project, we were able to come up with a presentation that we were able to present at the regional, state, and national levels of Future Business Leaders of America. And so, we came in second place at the state conference, where we have 6,000 members throughout North Carolina, and at the national conference that we attended in Anaheim, we had 14,000 students there nationwide, and competed against between 300 and 400 different high schools with our community service project. We're very grateful, this team and three here presented the project, and we came in ninth place in the entire nation, so we're very proud of our project.
My name's Trevor Rogers, and I also competed in T-shirt design throughout our state, and I got first, which made it our national shirt. On the front, it's got Legacy of Leadership, which is our, our theme for the year, and I did a star for, like, LA, the stars on the street, since Anaheim's so close, and then on the back, it's got the little movie clip thing, and Your Future Starts Today was North Carolina's theme, and it's got the dates.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
And then, we would just like to thank you all for supporting us. This is Shannon McConnell, he is a professional division member, and he's gonna be working with Trevor and Bryson, they're gonna go to Western Carolina University, and gonna start a chapter there, Phi Beta Lambda, so Shannon, you wanna talk to them?
I don't need the microphone, because I'm pretty loud anyway. For most of you that know me, I just want to thank the board for their support for these young students, it means a lot to me. As Ms. Brooks said, I'm actually the vice president, president-elect of the board for the state of North Carolina for the professional division. So I'm very engaged in mentoring these students on the high school, middle school, and on now, the, I'm very excited, Western Carolina University will be reactivating that chapter, and it's gonna be going very strong. These clubs and organizations mean so much to these young people, and definitely appreciate the support there that every one of you have given us, because these are the, the things that they don't learn in the classroom. You're not gonna learn about the world, and the soft skills that you learn, and how to market yourself, and go into an interview, you don't learn that in a textbook, you don't learn that in taking a test. So I just appreciate your support of these young individuals, and what we do, you know, in mentoring these young students to be the better business professionals of tomorrow. So thank you very much.
Great job.
So are you juniors, seniors, coming sophomore ages?
Me and Trevor have just graduated, so we'll be freshmen at Western Carolina University.
I graduated too, I'm going to William Jessup University, it's in Rockland, California.
And they're leaving me behind?
Rockland, California, it's about 30 miles north of Sacramento.
It's a long way from home.
It is a long way from home.
So you're a junior, right?
Yes, I've been left behind, so, I plan on, yeah, I plan on carrying on the legacy.
Thank you all for sharing.
Thank you all for the support as well.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I enjoy doing it, it's not, it's, it's something that I've been in FBLA since I was in high school. Ms. Donna Faulkner pulled me in and had a vision for me of what she wanted to do with me, and because of the organization, it's the business professional that I am today. And that's why I give back, because I know how important it is for these students. So, I appreciate it very much.
I was telling Mr. Shields, this is the beginning of my 20th year teaching, he was there to interview me way back in the day. And I'm, I'm actually on the North Carolina FBLA board, I don't think I've ever told you all that, but, and I'll probably be on it probably till I retire, so.
That's wonderful.
Don't retire.
All right, well, thank you all again.
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, we got from one impressive group of our local youth to another individual. Is it Taylor Hollins, is that correct? Welcome. She's gonna be our 4H representative at the NCACC Conference coming up, welcome.
Hi, thank y'all for having me. I was just asked to come and tell y'all a little bit about what's gonna be going on while I'm there. It's a two-day, well, yes, it's two days, I leave on Friday, get back Saturday evening. So it's two days of leadership training and civic training. So basically, they're teaching me and our young youth how to become county commissioners. I think that's pretty cool. Just a little bit about 4H, there's about 100 kids in about 12 different clubs. I personally have done a sewing club, I've been in budding chefs when I was younger, and now I am in the market steer showing club. Find it pretty fun. The thing that I'm going to is Youth Voice, it's in Durham, North Carolina, and really, they just kinda asked me to come and talk to y'all, and tell y'all that I was going, and maybe snap a quick picture if y'all don't mind?
We can do it. Are we happy?
They're gonna have a slideshow at your commissioner's meeting this weekend, of all the counties, can I get Ms. Paul's picture?
Absolutely. You want us up front, or you want us to stand back here?
Just stand back there, it's fine. Taylor, you'll stand right there in front.
And the 4H part of the conference is always a really big thing, I mean, they have, it keeps growing every conference, and it's always, it's a wonderful thing, and why don't you have a good Macon County representation, so thank you, Tamra.
Give her the gavel, Mr. Tate. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Old Business, 10A, placement of the new Public Safety Training Center, Burn Building at Southwest Community College, Macon Campus, county manager and SEC president, Dr. Thomas. Welcome, hello, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Dr. Thomas, and Curtis, glad to have you all with us tonight. As you'll recall, we've been discussing the fire safety training center for some time now, in terms of the location of the building, I think that as we looked into it, felt like the more favorable location was the location which we're discussing now, on the west, to the west of the property, as opposed to the east where we were discussing previously. In those discussions, Dr. Thomas and Chester In those discussions, Dr. Thomas and Chester and myself have sat down and met, and we're currently at a place where we have two proposals. The first being the ten point six acres. We kinda, to start with, we took that whole parcel of property over there at ten point six acres to begin discussions. And then, as we saw, actually, Dr. Thomas worked with us to show us where the building would actually be placed on this property, which would be toward the east boundary of that property on the first page that you're looking at here. So if you'll turn the page, and then go, actually turn to the back page, and you will see here where Dr. Thomas placed for us on this property where the building would actually go. And as we continued our discussions, we felt like, before moving forward with the survey, just to let you know that as opposed to ten point six acres there, that as six acres, we feel like that we can get that building on there with six acres as opposed to ten. So, with that being said, we were just wanting to measure twice and cut once before we move forward with the survey. That will be the first step as we begin moving forward with this fire safety training facility. So just wanted to make sure that before we kicked off there and started with the survey, which will then go on to both parties getting an appraisal of the property, we just wanted to get the board's blessing to move forward with this site selection.
Was that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman, or what?
Dr. Thomas, do you need to address us or anything?
No, so we're in agreement with that, and I think the six acres is adequate. It didn't adjust the building placement at all, it just took off the tail end of the back ten acres.
Make a motion then to accept the six acres and move forward.
We have a motion to approve the six acres, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Are there setbacks, Curtis, from a burn building? And the design details of a burn building? Are there any required setbacks from other structures?
The requirement from the North Carolina Off State Fire Marshal is that we have them in on three acres, which allows us some setback in the structure. So the six would be sufficient for us, once we get an architect to come in and have the full survey done, to place the building where it needs to be placed.
And so, all the required setbacks will be contained in this six acre parcel?
Yes, sir.
Because that's some good land on the tail end of this thing, back towards the river there. Not that y'all may use it for something in the future, but that's a good...
The other use would be for woodland operations, chainsaw plasters, different things would be in burning, and you could put it in that, and then just around the building itself.
Curtis, where do we stand with the building?
We're still waiting to move forward so we can hire an architect for it.
What are we waiting on?
The process for the state would be, just like Mr. Rowan said, you have to go through the survey. We have to have two appraisals. Board trustees, college has to approve and accept that piece of property. And upon that acceptance, the letter goes down to the state board of trustees for community colleges. It's put at least on their agenda, they have to accept it, and then will have to do an environmental scan of the property to make sure that there's anything there before the state accepts it into their inventory for the community college system. So there is, it's just the process of being able to...
We just weigh that pricing, keep doing that, so...
Yeah, we can't figure the credit that the county's going to get for its contribution to this project, though, without the property being surveyed and then appraised, so that's where we are right now.
And now, this is a huge step.
This is a huge step in that direction.
There's a, Commissioner Bill, all due respect, there's a three dash one that we're required to do for a project scope. All the finances has to be done on that, figured that all of this has to be done before it goes to the state board also. So the state construction can then say, yes, there's adequate funding, no, there's not adequate funding, and it's kind of that back and forth process, credit. I think there's been a lot of positives in some of the, you know, process of delaying it from the standpoint of finding a better location than our previous location. And some cost savings there based on some of the excavation and those things. So it's just a matter of getting the wheels turning and moving forward and making it happen at this point, I think.
And then you have to come back to this board for matching grant, matching funds, or is that already approved?
Actually, this property is gonna serve as a good portion of that. And that's the reason you've gotta get it valued so that there's agreed upon value for that credit that is agreed to by both the community college system as well as the county.
But the value of the land can offset matching completely, can it?
It can if the numbers are right.
It can if you had the financial resources to build the designated facility as established. So if you establish a number, you can use the property, the matching funds for county's proportion. But if there's not enough resources on the other side, say bond money that was set aside, then that's the conversation we'd be coming back either with county manager and county commissioners saying, in order to build X, we have A amount of bond money. Land is valued at whatever, but we still need B resources to be able to build the project.
That's a twenty-five percent match initially.
Correct.
But the land could be counted as a hundred percent of our twenty-five percent matching?
That is correct, if we had enough financial resources of bond money to build the projected project. You can scope it up, you can scope it down.
As an aside, if the property ends up being more than the match necessary or as much as match necessary, that they need money to do it, we could actually put that credit in the bank, if you will, with the community college group and utilize it for a future project.
That is true, that is correct. So anytime there's state money that's would be available, you can use the state money. What the match does is allow you to use bond money or state money prior to using county money. And if the project had enough bond money, then you could use all bond money to offset the match. Clear as mud?
Clear as mud? You know my feelings over Connecticut, North Carolina. Like, I think you're leading to act positive night is moving forward with the survey of the six acre...
And the appraisals.
And the appraisals.
Correct.
Now, if the appraisal comes in under, we may need to revisit this and look at tagging a couple more acres. That would be the benefit of the whole ten acres or eight acres. But if we could get a hundred percent wash with the land value, and six acres doesn't cover our twenty-five percent match?
Well, I think at the end of the day, it's like we've talked about before, the bond money is about one point four million dollars. That's all the bond money that has been set aside for this project. So, at the end of the day, that's all of the money that's gonna be coming, is that one point four million. And I think the range that we discussed at that meeting previously, the range of those buildings were from two point one to one point eight, somewhere around in there. So that's where, in the one point eight or thereabouts, was value engineering, which we had requested kind of a, tell us what you can do this for, bottom line. And that was that one point eight number. So at the end of the day, I think just from, based on what we're hearing, it's gonna be property plus money.
And that doesn't take into consideration what Ronnie referred to earlier, and we very well know the cost is going up every day.
It's just risk your own, I mean, you can't start building more.
So we're certainly gonna be, there's certainly gonna be a shortfall to get it built versus what bond money is about.
Well, I think we'll make sure we put everything in place for the survey and appraisal, that you can carry that out. Did that motion, is everything covered now, that we can move on this thing? We beat it about half to death over the last year.
All in favor of the six acres, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Was the appraisal in that motion as well?
Survey and appraisal. Is that right?
Is everybody good with that, survey and appraisal?
Got it.
Thanks, Chester. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Curtis.
Item ten B. Under all business, a presentation of proposed changes to grading license ordinance. Planning for me and development director, Mr. Jack Morgan.
It's your Mr. Chairman. How are you?
Good, thank you. So we, there's presently a grading license intact right now in Macon County. What Macon County Planning Board did is they just reviewed...
That was rescinded back in February?
Okay.
Or March by the board of commissioners. And tasked to the planning board to determine...
So it was rescinded until they reviewed it, is what we did?
Yes, exactly right. And that was sent to the planning board, I think Mr. Gillespie presented that as the liaison comments in May. Get pretty busy on this. So the planning board did just that. They met in May and discussed it somewhat. In June, they invited grading contractors to come and tell us what they thought. And in last July, they developed a bullet point list of items they wanted to hone back and present to you. And this would have been the goal, is what that might look like as an ordinance. And that's what, as the director of planning department, am presenting to the media and the middle of the community. To you, for your consideration. The planning board, I think, discussed this pretty handily. And I don't think they have anything else to add or take away from this. But I would assume it's up to you gentlemen to determine what to do with it next.
This is presented as a draft to you for your consideration, not for action this evening. Indeed, look at it, study it, understand that what's been handed out to you is one small section of chapter one fifty-three of the Macon County Code of Ordinances, which deals with soil erosion and sedimentation control. This would be a new section within that ordinance, is what this would effectively do.
The planning board did not undertake, because they were not advised to consider any other elements within that ordinance. So that's the only portion they addressed.
Are you, you're from Anahala?
I've got some right here.
So Jack, I think in response to Mr. Shook's question earlier, there was a question about if you're grading on your own property.
This addresses that, and there are some exemptions that most people are not aware of that exempts certain activities, such as gardening, things like that, that are, agriculture is completely exempt. And I would advise anyone that has concerns to review that ordinance. It's on our website online, or I can get a hard copy to anybody that wants one.
In fact, it might not be a bad idea to provide each of these commissioners with a copy of the Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Ordinance. They will not be able to read this and understand it without that ordinance, simply because there's a definitional section, and some of the terms and words here are defined in that ordinance. And there is, as Jack indicated, a section that deals with exceptions of land disturbing activities that would not be regulated under any circumstances.
And nothing changed about the amount, the initial amount of land that you disturbed right there?
No, nothing else.
Stayed the same.
What is that amount, refresh my memory?
There's not a threshold amount, it depends on what you're doing. And if it's not under the exception, then it falls in.
But that language didn't change?
No, sir.
The half acre language? I think that was changed.
Long time ago.
Yeah, that's, but that stayed the same, too.
Yes, this, we weren't asked to consider that, the planning board was not.
Just a little, a little history from when the planning board was tasked with this. There's how many licensed, current license holders? Before it was rescinded, how many were there?
Hundred and, almost a hundred and fifty, I think.
And a letter was sent out to all hundred and fifty of those inviting them to come to the planning board meeting. I think, as with all those type situations, you don't get a hundred and fifty there. But I think the conversation that took place, and Jack, you correct me if I'm wrong, that night was very candid. And the planning board heard different sides. And I think they, these changes are a reflection of what they heard, both from licensed contractors, as well as homeowners and non-licensed contractors with that. So I think, I think it's, this is worth your consideration.
Chairman, can I say something?
Sure.
As an educator, when it comes to the license time, do you have people, that gives people assistance? Second language people, people that have LD, learning disabilities?
There's the, the tests we've had in the past, there's not, it wasn't a timed test, it was an open book test. And if you needed it read orally to you, we'd do that. We have a Spanish translator in the building that we use sometimes at our desk. We never asked to use her for that purpose, but we could.
Okay. I heard you say definitions and vocabularies and things like that. And sometimes that can be an obstacle to understanding something in a question or something like that.
No question, it can be.
I just wanna make sure that everybody at least had opportunities, even when they're not familiar with that language.
Yeah, I would not envision the board trying to consider this this evening. In fact, probably not even at the next meeting. I think the board might wanna give the planning board some idea of which direction the board might be heading at the next meeting. Are there changes that you desire, is it looking pretty good? But the reality of, this is one of those ordinances that I think is gonna require a public hearing in order to adopt. And we will obviously need some direction from the board as to whether or not it's interested in pursuing it or whether it needs some additional work, because there will be an advertising requirement for that public hearing.
Gentlemen, sounds like we have a homework assignment, so we'll be ready for next month. Thanks, Jack.
Should I email the ordinance to you, gentlemen?
That'd be great. Ten C under all business, Colosseum Community Association Agreement.
At your last meeting, Mr. Bill brought good news to the board and indicated that Colosseum Community Association, Inc., which was doing some work on the old Salem church to make out a community center, had saved some money in the process. In a nutshell, they came in and wanted to be able to use those savings to do further work on the building in the form of, I believe it was repairs to wall and painting, is that correct, Mr. Bill?
That's correct.
And I indicated to you that you indeed needed a written amendment to the existing agreement. That is that amendment, that is needed in order to accomplish that.
Does everybody get the chance to read it, or, Mr. Chairman, you want to take the chance to read it?
Yeah, let's just take thirty seconds, I'm almost done.
You sent this out to us, didn't you?
I did.
No wording is changed?
Nothing's changed since...
So I make a motion, we approve the amendment to the agreement to provide recreational...
Motion to approve.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Chester. Moving on to the new business, approval of revised fire district map for Calway Fire and Rescue Department. Emergency Services Director, Mr. Warren Cave, welcome, Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Pretty small award.
Mr. Chairman, tonight, I'm actually here asking for approval of some changes to Calway Fire and Rescue's insurance district. And I want to remind the board, fire department has a response area, which is the area that obviously that they respond to, and answer calls in. And then within that response area, it's actually divided up into various layers of insurance districts, particularly a five mile insurance district, six mile insurance district, and anything over six miles, which is considered class ten or unprotected. If you have a fire department such as Calwe that has a lower protection class rating, and they have a Class 7, anything that's within that five mile district receives the benefit of that lower protection class rating. Calwe Fire and Rescue actually constructed a new substation on Mason Branch Road. We have went to inspect them, look at their, the equipment and the manpower they have there. And they have met the requirements to be considered as a substation. What happens is, we adjust the map, we make the, the reflections are noted on the map, the, the structures that are included within the five mile district now, that's, that's within that substation range. And then that, once you all approve that map, it gets forwarded on to the North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal. Then they will schedule an inspection and actually come up and officially certify the substation. So this is the first step from Macon County to get the substation recognized by the state of North Carolina to have them inspected. And just for reference, that, that inclusion does not change the response area, doesn't change any of the outside area that they respond to. But it did include seventy-four parcels that were in a lower protection class rating, which included thirty-nine structures. So those folks will actually see the benefit of a lower insurance premium next time they go get their homeowner's insurance, once the substation is recognized by North Carolina. So tonight, I'm asking for your approval of the map as indicated. I do have a big one in the back, Ronnie, if you want to look at a big one back there.
I can see it.
But basically, it covers the area on Mason Branch Road up to their current district line. So, asking for approval.
Thanks for your work on this, Warren.
Now, is there overlap with Burning Town?
No, everything, it, the, the benefit of the lower protection class stops at their response area. So it does not overlap into another fire district.
And that's less than five miles?
Yes, yes. You would actually have to change what you consider the service district, which is the area that they respond to in order for that to actually take effect.
That's a much more complicated process than what you're doing tonight.
Right.
So you're just doing this to certify the new substation?
Just the substation.
Burning Town, are you doing Burning Town as a conjunction with this? I mean, they're both?
No, we actually, we actually went to Burning Town and there, we were not able to verify that they had the adequate number of manpower on the roster. What happens is, for a main station, you have to have twenty people to have a main station recognized. And currently, for every substation you have, you have to have eight additional personnel on the roster. We, we had some issues, we couldn't verify the personnel, and we're, we're actually scheduled to go back to them in September, first week in September, to get it to you at the September meeting for approval of that.
And you'll let us know regardless if they're not ready, one of the maps not presented?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
So a motion to approve the expanded map for Calwe Fire District, if you'd like.
Motion to approve. Second, Commissioner Gillespie, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I wanted to just let you know we did get verification DOT today, that they will be installing the warning lights at third call, so that's a good thing.
All right, we're gonna move on to agreement for recreational opportunities for the Scaly Mountain Historical Society.
Yes, this is the annual agreement that the Board approves every year. You know, the Historical Society agrees to have the Old Scaly Schoolhouse open for, you know, the benefit of the public. And we give them five thousand a year to help in that, those operations. And that five thousand dollars is budgeted, so it's not asking for no money.
Thank you, Warren. Motion to approve the agreement?
So move.
Motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Thanks, Warren. Landscape renovation plan for Robertson Carpenter Community Building. Want me to handle that?
Yes.
Be happy to, Mr. Derek. At our last meeting, we opened up two bids for landscape plans for the Robertson Carpenter Building. But when we opened them up, we really weren't comparing apples to apples. We had two different companies, landscape companies, provide us two different plans for what they thought was gonna be good. They both had different prices, both had different, completely different designs of what the landscaping should, should look like there. So I raised my hand and put up a little objection to that, because in reality, we really weren't comparing apples to apples when it came to designs or to prices. So I made the suggestion that we get one of our local landscape architects to give us a price on doing a set of plans, landscape plans, then we'll put it out for bid, and then whenever we do receive prices, we will be comparing apples to apples. So we asked Hank Ross from the Highlands Community to do that, and he has provided, I think it was in our packet. Derek, can you help me out with a fair rate on that?
Yes, it was, it is in your packet, and the, what we got was two thousand?
Two hundred and eighty dollars.
Two hundred and eighty dollars.
And I think that was to create the plans, then he had.
Gotta add the eight forty.
He had an additional, if we want him to administer the bids. I never see those, correct?
Yes.
So I think that was if we want him to, or if y'all want to handle it, that's fine, too.
Right, we can do that either way. It's, basically, it's under the, it's under all the bidding thresholds, so just authorizing us to move forward with this proposal and we can get it taken care of.
Okay.
This money's in the budget, I take it?
Let me, man?
Yes.
We're gonna take it out of the project contingency.
Yes, we'll take it out of the project.
Certainly Hank Ross is very experienced and knows what he's doing, and he put everything out there, so with that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars at this time, and the eight hundred and forty, I, I think we would let that be up to the county manager, see if he wants to handle that at that time. So I make a motion, we approve Ross Landscape Architecture for two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars to come up with a set of documents for the landscaping at Robertson Carpenter.
So I hear the motion in a second, any further discussion, any questions? All in favor?
We're talking about putting it out for bid after he does.
After he creates the plan, then we'll be comparing apples to apples, where last time we weren't.
The, the design is not put out for bid.
Money.
Professional fees.
No.
We're gonna have to pay for the appraisal survey.
All right. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, seem to have a saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. It's five o, Derek. All right, request for North Carolina Forest Service, Mr. Benjamin Jamon Keener, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, as he's coming up, BJ and I have met on this a couple times. With the budget request for the North Carolina Forest Service for fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, they had requested sixteen thousand dollars from the county for a first response attack vehicle. I think the current vehicle they're using is twenty years old, has over a hundred thousand miles, and is, of course, getting outdated. This is a conversation we had last year. However, that request was contingent upon the state's budget passing. As the state budget has passed, the money was approved in the state budget to provide the matching funds at sixty percent for this vehicle, and the county's forty percent portion would equate to sixteen thousand dollars. And the state, again, with their approval of their budget, approved the remaining sixty percent of the funds for this vehicle.
That's correct.
Benjamin, do you have anything else to add?
That, that's it, other than next week, next Friday is the day that we have to have a hard and fast yes or no, if the counties want to fund it, because that's the day that they order the vehicles.
The sixteen's in our budget.
No, it was not, because we did not know if the, at the time, if the state budget with the funds for the remaining sixty percent would be in it.
They did not fund it two years ago.
No, they did not.
So that was a.
So isn't the fiscal funded this time, though?
Does that come out with a contingency or fund balance?
Or is that a fund balance?
Fund balance?
One, one time.
If we could.
Yeah, if we could, I think we can take it from the contingency.
Yeah.
I think you have a fund balance one time.
Just to add to that, they have been very, the North Carolina Forest Service has been very frugal with county money. In fiscal year fifteen, they actually underspent their budget by forty-six hundred dollars, and that money goes directly back into our fund balance that year end. In fiscal year sixteen, they underspent the budget by eighty-nine hundred dollars. In fiscal year seventeen, up to this point, although we haven't received the June invoice, they had underspent the budget by nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars. So they, they are very good stewards of the money we get now.
BJ, do you get to keep the other truck in service?
We won't keep it in service, the county has the option to request the truck back. And I'd have to get all the forms and stuff from my regional folks, but if that's an option that y'all would like to, if the county would like to have the truck, I can work with Derek or whoever and try to make that happen.
Is that through a bid system, or is that just?
It'll be, it will be a bid system, yes. And I'm not quite sure how that works, I'll find out and get back with you.
Truck's in pretty good shape?
Yeah. Yeah, it's in, it's in fairly decent shape, thirteen years old.
Something we can sell, huh?
Possibly, yes.
We're gonna catch some of the money.
Yep.
That's a discussion here.
Where are you gonna get the money?
If you get a motion, whoever makes the motion can suggest where it comes from.
I think I want to ask Laurie, what kind of, it seems like we're short in that contingency money, Laurie?
We've got a hundred and twenty-five thousand budgeted, and you've spent zero to date. And of course, today's only August eighth, so you're just a little over a month in, but yeah, we had a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand budgeted.
But we pick that quite often as we move through our, so I go along with the fund balance, too. Can I take it from the fund balance?
Make that motion, Commissioner Bill?
I make a motion that we take the money from the fund balance, as you perceive it.
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand.
Say. In a second, any further discussion?
With the candy off, that you want to see if the county can claim the truck?
Yes.
And then we might kind of offer it for sales to offset that cost?
That's.
You used the word claim, I think it, you're in a bid situation, right?
Yes, it will be a bid situation.
A bid, what do you mean?
If you want to buy it.
Have to buy it. Have to buy that truck.
Oh, he says your county could get it back?
Yes, they can, through a bid process.
Oh, to buy it back, yeah, buy it once. That'd make good sense. Could have brought that in.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Five o, Mr.?
Thank you.
Thank you, BJ.
Mr. Derek. Discussion of possible closure of county offices on August twenty-first.
Mr. Chairman, first, I'd like for everybody to look at your desk. Pam Ledford, want to be sure I pointed this out, you got a moon pie and a sun drop. So what's gonna happen with the eclipse is the moon pie's gonna go in front of the sun drop. Anyway, I thought you all would appreciate that.
I've had figured that out.
That really cleared it up for me. Nonetheless, wanted to bring this to the Board's attention, been getting a lot of questions from both county employees, as well as members of the community. I think that our neighboring counties, Cherokee County and Jackson County, have both declared the county offices to be closed on the day of the eclipse, simply.
Transylvania, Wayne.
And many other county, due to the influx of people that are expected in the area. I know the sheriff's here with us tonight, and Warren Cave with Emergency Management. And, you know, the, as far as the public safety is concerned, you know, that is a, that could potentially be an issue, depending on the amount of people that are, that are coming into the county. And I know the sheriff can speak to some of the things that he's found, and I think he spoke with the judge. If you wanted to just update the Board on those.
First, before you make your decision next meeting, I'll bring you who's in a, one of the same. Warren, if you, if you'd like the opportunity to speak too about what y'all are doing. I mean, I don't want to go into detail exactly what we're doing. What I can tell you is that it's kind of an unknown thing, we don't really know what to expect. We're hearing all the experts saying about how many, they've been talking for nine months to a year about all the, the people that are coming. And so basically, it's kind of like calling a deck of cards, playing poker, you know? We're gonna, we're gonna do, we're gonna think of worst case scenario, we're gonna prepare for it, have all the, our staff working, my entire department's working for that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. I know other agencies are doing the same thing. And the simple truth is, you know, it doesn't matter what our personal opinion is about what's gonna happen on that Monday. We need to prepare for everything. I've got the utmost confidence in what Emergency Management's doing. We've been through some, some things before, we've worked together great. As far as county offices, I, I would, I would make a recommendation that, that you close the county offices and allow us to, to utilize all of the resources that we have, have some of those people even be on call. And if we need some county employees to come in and assist on different things, then we'll be able to call those county employees.
Sheriff, what are, what are the judges doing, what's court doing?
Judges, judges have closed court, there is no court that day. I talked to Judge Coward, and as, as you know, with the courthouse security stuff that's going on, one of the recommendations that's been discussed a lot is about courthouse. And on this day, they're making recommendations that we close our courthouse.
I don't, I don't know if this Board has the ability to close the clerk's office, clerk's Superior Court's office. I don't know if this Board has the ability, that's a state office.
That judge does.
State, North Carolina does.
Superior Court judge does, he says.
Mr. Chairman, let me add a little bit to what Ronnie was talking about. We've actually had some, some releases sent out to the media, and we had some conversation with folks to, to get people prepared for this. We, we probably didn't ever anticipate talking about this years ago. We, we've never done one in our career, and we'll never do another one in our career. And there's really no, there's no basis for us to find anybody else anywhere around that's ever dealt with this to get any kind of perspective on what to expect. So we've been, we've been sort of middle of the ground cautious. We anticipate traffic issues. If it comes to fruition, that these folks are actually traveling, and from our perspective, we, we tend to believe that the occupancies are going to be as great or greater than our typical July fourth weekend. We've been asked for a lot of numbers. We have generated some numbers on, on what we think could be here based on the number of rentals we have, the hotels, motels, campsites, Airbnbs, different formulas. Oregon Emergency Management has the best formula we've found on how to calculate that. And, and the numbers are more than what we would usually anticipate on July fourth, so we just don't know. We, we just don't know exactly what to tell you. We are anticipating us, in particular, the demand for our services will be greater. So we're not gonna have holiday, we're, we're gonna work. We, we've taken a middle of the ground approach to our releases. A lot of counties will, will encourage businesses to close, we have not done that. Particularly if you have tourism related business, you probably want to be open. But we also don't want to be the one to tell everybody to close. If, if this is gonna happen, traffic's gonna be bad, and then they lose business, and nothing happens. But we do want people to be cautious, and be prepared for long lines, they could be there, and just be prepared to wait, just in case something comes up.
And a side note, and me and Warren have talked about this issue, is if you close county offices, how do you, what do you do about the, the employees? Or is it a paid day off, is it not? If you pay them, what about all those other people that don't get the opportunity to have that day off? And they end up having to work, is it fair to them? So it kind of goes back and forth, I want you to deal with that.
And, and we get a lot of credit sometimes for emergency services as far as us working holidays and weekends. But, but you have other folks too, that, you have your Ed Park folks, and you have convenience center folks, and you have other essential services other than us. Sometimes we get all the attention, but, but there are, there are other services, our network folks, the, the people that are really essential to keeping us and the general public running too. So there, there are other folks that work holidays and weekends.
I, I think I had a concern about sanitation part of it. On your convenience centers, I've expressed my feeling about that. I've got a feeling, actually, the, the clips, there's gonna be a lot of packing up and going. If those convenience centers aren't open, whether in Natahala and where it may be, when they come in on Tuesday morning, it's gonna be stacked high.
One of the conversations, and I certainly don't want to speak for Chris Stahl, nor am I going to be as lengthy as Chris. Chris and I have already had some conversations about what to expect, so he's talked to us. One of his concerns is making sure that the cans are empty Monday morning, because usually over the weekend, they don't haul stuff out of the convenience centers, they wait till, they don't have anywhere to take it on Monday. The landfill's not open on Sunday, so they don't haul till Monday. So he was going to talk to Derek and see what he could work out to perhaps empty the. So he was going to talk to Derek and see what he could work out to perhaps empty those early on, on Sunday, so that there, there's room to put stuff on Monday to deal with, with the very concern that you have. So Chris is already, he's got some thoughts in back of his mind, and he's working out a plan to try and address that.
So the convenience centers will be open?
I, I can't speak for Chris, but I, I don't know if he's made any conversation with Derek yet.
I think Chris is still, I talked to him today, and he is still trying to, to work that out. I think that he is considering dumping early to make some more room for any trash that could be disposed.
It will be open on Monday.
But the convenience centers, of course, are manned by personnel.
Right.
What's it cost to shut down? I mean, the, what would it cost us financially? Are you talking about just giving a day off, or trading out a day?
I know Jackson County counted it as a holiday, so we would do the regular, um, i- if, if that's the route we wanted to go, we would just amend our holiday schedule that was adopted on, for two thousand seventeen, that we adopted on November in two thousand sixteen, amend that, and make the eclipse day a holiday. And just count it as a holiday.
And take another day off, or is that an extra day?
Just an extra day.
Would you be paying people that work for the county that actually got called in, or would be working otherwise? And for example, having to bid, you don't have any IT problems that day. But you need your IT, you need your IT. Well, and if there's problems, you need to bring those people.
I think that's what we'll sit down, I think if that's the route we choose to go, we'll definitely, we'll sit down together and determine the essential personnel that will need to be on call or available to, uh, to work alongside our emergency services and sheriff's department if the need was to still arise.
And if we deem it a holiday, if EMS or sheriff's department are working on the holiday, they will get holiday pull-up pay plus the actual hours that they work, if we declare it a holiday, so.
What's that cost? Will it throw a major kink in your budget?
I can tell you that our staffing will be double that day compared to normal, if not more. I think Robbie's is that much or more.
Or we could, you know, come to work and everybody use their precaution and best judgment. I know that there's a lot of, um, places that are still working on that day. I think the town, the town is working. I think the town of Highlands is still on.
Yeah, but they're taking, what, three hours off?
They're taking just time to view the, view the eclipse there. So...
I think Spark, Park Place is gonna be an issue too, and you had that freed up out there for the people that are coming in. 'Cause they're gonna have a, an activity here in town that's gonna take up from one o'clock to six o'clock. With music and a lot of different activities. It'd be nice to have it, they can back up where the viewer could park, or they go park somewhere.
I'm glad these only happen about once every ninety-nine weeks.
We'll have to worry about it again.
If we get this one wrong, we don't have to work, nobody will.
I'm not sure I still know about the convenience center. I guess, I see Mr. Shook here, and I think about Nantahala, and having talked with some people out there who has cabins and stuff. I can see when, when those people leave there on Monday, that trash is gonna go somewhere. And, um, you know, you have convenience centers, and I'd like to think a lot of it would go into that. Not, it'll be on the side of the roads, it'll be, uh, if you close the convenience center, I, I think we'll, we'll be trashed on Tuesday.
I think Mr. Shields brings up a valid point. And irregardless of what estimates you listen to, I think it's fair to say that there's gonna be more people here than, than what we ordinarily are equipped to handle. And if everything goes absolutely smooth as can be, there's still gonna be more bumps and scratches to deal with just because of the sheer number of people. And I think, you know, any, when you take any major event, you know, part of our responsibility, and I think of the town's responsibilities, is that you provide essential services. So, so I think, I think that we're gonna be required to do that. You know, when, who knows how many's gonna be here? But when you're renting spots in cornfields for a hundred and fifty dollars a night, you've got a waiting list. I think it's fair to assume that, that you're gonna have more people here. When the airport already has more planes coming in than they do Titans, which has never happened before, I think you could assume that you're gonna have more people than normal. So, so just because there's more people, does that mean anything bad's gonna happen? No, because Robbie's gonna prevent that. But I think that... That one, that magic one. You need, you only have to use it one time in your career, so. So I, I think, I think that we should, we should be smart in, in planning, and I'm very confident that we've done that. But I think, you know, that, that we need to have a realization that, that there's gonna be a lot of people in town. And, and, and me personally, in my business, you know, I've gotta consider that. And, you know, my people trying to move around and do service work and things of that nature, we're, we're not gonna be effective that day. We're gonna be on call. Everybody I've got will be on call that day. But we're not gonna work because we feel like that, that, you know, it would be very productive waiting with the crowds. But we, we still have some essential services that we have to provide.
What, what are you, what are you paying the...
Snow day treaty.
You're paying the...
Is it a holiday? Is it like a holiday?
No, a snow day's not a holiday.
What's a snow day?
A snow day would just be the, everybody would get paid, but you don't have, like, the emergency services don't get time and a half plus the day like they would on a holiday pay. Because you're, basically, that, that's the main difference. Although the county offices are closed, employees would still be compensated. They don't, because we made a decision to close the office, that wasn't their decision, so they don't have to use vacation time or sick leave. And the essential services still work and still operate. There's maintenance folks on call that come in and scrape, um, the emergency services personnel. Sometimes we have people at the landfill. And, and it's straight pay. It's just like they're working a, a regular day. You don't get, it doesn't kick it up into that bonus rate, or the, the time and a half and the, um, things of that nature.
So if I understand that right, basically, if you're in a position, or if you're in a, a job that is classified as non-essential, then you get the day off of pay?
Yes, it's just like a snow day.
And if you are in one of those essential positions, and you got to work, then you get paid if you come work to...
You get paid, yes, you still get paid.
A lot of employees have issue with that because I could've stayed home and tried to pay to...
Yeah.
We understand that, and we don't, honest to goodness, I think I'd speak for Warren too. I've never heard my officers or any of my employees complain about that when that happened, to be honest with you. They just, they know what their responsibilities are. They know it's important, and they come in.
I think the reality of it is, is most of our employees recognize that this is gonna be something that they're probably not gonna get an opportunity to see again. So you're gonna lose a portion of the day anyhow.
Non-productive.
You know?
It's not gonna be a productive day.
And I'm gonna be as guilty as any, and we'll have to talk about it a lot. I'm gonna run outside two hours before it happens, see if it's starting yet, you know, all that. So I think, you know, when you look from a productivity standpoint, it might be more folks standing out front of courthouse.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, from me and the county manager, it's the county manager's decision at the end of the day. I mean, let, let him look at the budget and see which way's the best way, and if we can do the, if the holiday deal don't break the budget, I think, I think the sheriff makes a good point. If these people are out there working and something, I don't think you can do it like a snow day. I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's fair.
'Cause do you have over, what, a hundred employees?
I was gonna say, and back to the budgetary issue, if he's bringing in, if he's bringing in everybody, we're gonna be over budget anyway.
We're gonna be over budget anyway, so...
If he's bringing in every employee for four days.
It's gonna be a budget concern down the road anyway, so.
Down the road anyway, yeah.
See, ours are a little bit different, Paul, because ours are night and day. And so basically, that weekend from Friday till Monday, our entire department, every employee that I have employed with sheriff's office, either days or nights in some way.
If you talk to some of the other counties, we have, they're, they're all...
The same...
They're all struggling with the same thing. They don't know either. Transylvania County, Cherokee County, Jackson County, they're all, nobody knows, so. But I'd leave it to the discretion, that's really the county manager's call.
I agree. So the county manager's back pack.
And they would, uh, but now, if, if the holiday thing has to be adopted and approved by the board, therefore, it would have to be amended.
It'd be amended tonight.
It would have to be amended and approved by the board. So that was the reason why he's in a holiday.
And make recommendations, now, isn't it? We'll, we'll be done.
A little late for the holiday, 'cause that, it's expensive.
Well, the holiday pay is really only for sheriff and EMS, because us regular folk, you know, we're not gonna work, you know, I mean, we're gonna have eight holiday, thirty-two regular that week. We wouldn't work extra hours.
It's not for all the employees. Holiday pay for all the employees.
Well, everybody would get paid holiday, but my point is, you're not gonna be working.
Double time.
You're not getting double time, right, except for sheriff and EMS. Those are simple services. Possibly IT staff, maintenance staff.
And they deserve every penny of it.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me give you another option. And again, it doesn't matter where you're working holidays, so we, our folks do what they have to do. But i- if the money's an issue for us, if, if we could just tell our folks, take eight hours off some other day, I don't have an issue with that either, um, if it's a money thing. We still have to pay them, because if I, they take off, I have to backfill them somewhere. So there is a cost.
There's still a cost.
But, but if that's easier on you, if you make your decision, I make it.
Let's just make, just declare it a holiday.
What, what about the, uh, people coming in?
Just go take our Christmas holiday. Now, that, that's happened before. They gave us a holiday for something else. They took one of our days for Christmas, so I'm just, I don't wanna be there.
Two thousand eleven.
Yeah, I know, but I just don't want that to happen.
You have to do a comp time.
If you're doing eight hours, though, what if a person came in?
I wouldn't say just pay a holiday pay. Don't worry about comp. That creates more of a headache. If we just declared a holiday...
We'll keep it back there.
Yeah, if we just declared a holiday, and if they worked that day, they get holiday pay plus hours worked. That's the cleanest, simplest way for us.
And you couldn't do...
Don't have a lot of payroll.
You couldn't come in there early and stand an hour later and get your eight hours in that way, then be awful.
It's so complicated.
No.
With that many people in, it just gets...
Just holidays, the cleanest.
I'd recommend, uh, I'd recommend that the board consider declaring August twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, a holiday, and amending the, uh, amending our current holiday schedules to include that. That would be my recommendation.
Following the county manager's recommendation, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we follow the recommendation, declaring eclipse day a holiday.
Circuit that motion.
Second. I did the, uh, Commissioner Glassby seconded. I did the same at my business, so I'm, I'm gonna bring that.
And I'm the same thing. We're all, we're all gonna cook your mind until you're gonna come eat, and we'll eat.
Yeah, we think you could.
Could be a veggie burger.
Now, who's going to decide the essential services? I mean, we're all those people gonna make county, we're shut down.
That's the county manager, though.
And I will also tell you that our emergency operations center will be open on a limited basis. So, Mr. Chairman, you have a chair there that you love, and I'd like to...
Appreciate the offer. All right, we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Was there a decision made about the courthouse? And what's the...
It's a holiday.
It's a holiday.
Okay.
I do think somebody from the county needs to speak to the clerk's office and determine what, what the state North Carolina's planning to do through the clerk's office. I've, I've not been privy to any conversation, but, um...
I know they...
We don't have the ability to shut that office.
No, they, I know that even when we declare early leave for snow, they might sometimes leave an hour or two after us or before that we let the county out. So it's definitely a difference.
But you can interplay with them and work that out.
And it would be helpful if, if the press could pick this up and, and let people know, for example, you're gonna have...
I don't get it off. I pay holiday for me.
The, uh...
You gotta take pictures of it, Rick.
I mean, for example, you could have real estate offices counting on closing purchases and sale that day, or closing schedule that day.
Ain't a lawyer gonna work that day.
And they're not, and they're not gonna have...
Lawyer ain't gonna, they get holiday every day, they ain't gonna work.
Mr. Manager, I would, uh, I would volunteer to get up with Vic Perry first thing in the morning and have a discussion with him, and then contact you immediately and set up a meeting for me and him to come see you and start that discussion until it's down at the end of this week, try to, try to have you a solid answer.
All right, ten F, resolution regarding dangerous dog board.
Uh, so, gentlemen, as you know, approximately a year ago, animal control in Macon County was shifted from an animal control director, John Hook, into the health department. At that time, the, um, animal control ordinance had some basic amendments made to it so as to reflect the change to the health department. At the time those amendments were presented to you, told you that only basic changes were made, but there would be some additional changes forthcoming. In the process of working on those amendments with the health department, it has been discovered that our dang, dangerous dog, uh, or potentially dangerous dog resolution needs some adjustment, given that change. I have prepared the resolution, which would accomplish those changes, and would present those changes to you and that resolution to you with a recommendation to adopt it.
I guess I'm the dangerous dog person, so I'll make the motion.
There you go.
And I make a motion, the potentially dangerous dogs, a resolution, uh, be approved as presented.
Do we have a motion?
I was making a motion.
Do we get a second?
Second.
Second, my Commissioner Bill. Any further discussion? You want a chance to add whatever, gentlemen?
I thought Mr. Higgin would help me.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is consent agenda. Items we normally approve and enact in one motion, but if there's any items that you, gentlemen, would like to see removed, we'd be happy to keep the discussion. If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion where you approve all ones as presented.
Okay. Another motion to second, my Commissioner Shields. All in favor?
Aye.
Derek, is there any updates on appointments?
Uh, yes, although, uh, the appointments for, we have, the health board has three. The community funding board has two. And...
Planning board?
The planning board has one.
Highlands, correct.
And I, yes, and I know all those have been posted. We have not received any applications. The, uh, we are, and June Ruckner spoke with me today, and he is, he does have a position that is interested in serving. And we're filling out an application.
So no action?
No action.
Need for a closed session? I'm unaware of anything?
No, sir.
Entertainer motion to adjourn.
So I'm moving, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I apologize. Yesterday, I celebrated my second, seventy-second birthday. The first thing I did was say the county commissioners are meeting at seven, so I came an hour late. But I have thirty seconds for public session, which...
We had a motion on the floor to adjourn. Can it hold till our next meeting?
No, it's, uh, very urgent.
Come on.
We think these fellows from Nantahala, we'll try to have a meeting over there.
Yeah, I think so. I think it's a good idea.
Thank y'all for coming. We'll keep updating on what's going on with this.
Thank you.
And about the, do y'all know the fellow who, uh, who helped people in Nantahala? They want a second buoy out there at Lake Seance? I've been notified about that. I've been, I've, and Derek, I think, has a Mr.?
Law?
Law.
Steve?
Steve Law?
Steve Law?
I've got three calls on.
He wants to bring it out, but, but Steve Law.
No, no, it ain't the name, mate. That's a call.
Don Gordon?
No.
Sorry, Don, we all make this up. Don.
Thank you.
Jim Cohen?
They said that they're still having a weight problem near Lake Seance. It's because of them jet skis doing didos. I don't know who has the authority to approve that, but we, I meant to bring that.
We have to go back through the North Carolina.
We'll have to go back through the Wildlife Resources Commission.
Well, they went to Wildlife, we gone to scoot the buoy all night into the water, but it didn't solve nothing. It ain't gonna solve nothing if they get one on a ticket.
Could be enforcement issue.
Somebody's gonna be over there, though.
Somebody's gonna be there.
Is the second buoy here?
I think that they've got it approved to have another buoy out there.
Yeah, we put a brand new one out there, we took the old one out, put a brand new one out there.
What we did is we moved it out.
Yeah, they want a second buoy with that, in y'all's opinion, is that gonna help anything, or they just do didos around here too?
You don't need a second one out there. Anybody can see the one.
Yeah, that's right, that's just a narrow cove, and that thing.
Narrow, real narrow.
They're cutting donuts around here.
Problem is enforcement.
No one can force that to wildlife.
They gotta be there.
I'll talk to, I'll talk to Steve and tell him what.
I'm sorry, I ain't got, I thought I had his name.
If you got a problem, you can call you. Like, like he said, I, I can't sit on there, if they don't give them a report today.
Write a ticket, yeah. All right, thank y'all, thank you for.
All right, Norrell, let's make it quick. Motion to adjourn, ready to roll.
I really let the cat out of the bag. This is self-explanatory. I know that we are very adverse to doing any kind of land use, and my main thrust is, Gary? My main thrust has been to the mainspring conservation, and that's what I'm hoping to achieve. But this is a very significant viewpoint, my memo says, both for us and for visitors, I would hate to lose it if three houses are built right next to that barn. And if there's some way you can talk to the owner, when I looked at the land records, you, I don't know who it is, because his signature is indecipherable. But if you could encourage the landowner to either donate the land or have a, some sort of exception, or maybe a promise never to build there.
I think that's Jim Parish's, Marie Roper and Claude Roper.
One view is from the looking east and the other is looking west.
So that's from the middle of the house, down below the road?
Exactly.
Right on twenty-eight. And this Roper and Claude Roper and Marie Roper, they're a little form, and Jim might have bought all of that, I don't know if he ever went into that.
So up until May, it didn't seem to be a problem, they'd only built one house and then maybe a second. And all of a sudden, during June, they've got boom, 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 three spec houses going up.
Houses are selling, well, that's, that's why they're doing. It's five second building.
But right along the barn, there are lots four, five, and six, and that's what.
If you buy them, you don't, if you go down and buy them, you don't have a way to rent a new house on.
I think Jim Parish owns them, don't he?
Yeah, I believe he does.
You know Jim?
And he's a very reasonable person.
Do you know Jim?
Well, yes, but he won't listen to me, he'll listen to you.
But I think the only, the only thing he can do there is when they buy the lot.
All right, thank you, Norrell. Motion on the floor to adjourn, my Commissioner Bill, we have a second? You have a second, all in favor? Thank you, gentlemen, pleasure to serve with all y'all, ladies and gentlemen.